Going to like to make, someone like to make a motion that we kind of change the order and do the announcements in the beginning.
Is that number four approval agenda?
Or?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to put the announcements at the top of the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have no public session. Okay, so Joyce, you want to go ahead and do what you need to do?
Sure, sure. Thank you very much for doing this. The last few months have not been too easy. I don't know if everybody knows, but Bob fell and broke his hip and his pelvis at the end of February. And it's been quite a journey. It's getting better, I must say, so that's the good part. And I guess I've been reflecting ever since watching newscast today about all that's going on in the world and how upsetting and difficult it is. And I just want to thank you all for hanging in there and using the arts as they should be used, because I think the arts are one of the ways in which we can address the hatred and divisiveness and warfare that we seem to be having these days. So I just encourage you all to hang in there, and I thank you for the fine job you're all doing. I wish I could be with you more, but just know that I am in spirit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Family first, family first.
Yeah.
Take care of family.
That's where we are right now.
Yeah.
And just briefly, I did manage to be part of the Greater Middletown Corral thanks to a lot of Zoom rehearsals. And the May 1st concert of Haydn's Creation was just what people needed, I think, to kind of feel better, feel better about all that has been going on, especially with COVID. And we were able to sing masked, the orchestra, which had about 30 players, was masked. We had 500 wonderful masked audience members there. And I know some of you were there, and I thank you for coming. It was an absolute artistic high point, I think, for the corral in all its history, which is almost as long as the commissions. And I think one thing of note was the soloists that we were able to bring to the stage. In a strange way, COVID helped us, because when Joe was looking for soloists for the creation, he was able to get some international singers who normally would be off singing in Paris or Munich or Sydney Opera House or Singapore or someplace. And they were free. And I think never has Middletown High's auditorium had such wonderful vibrations as it did when those soloists sang. And so I just thank the commission for its support of the corral, which is very important. And it was wonderful to have Ben come and address the audience at the beginning. So, end of report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with Bob.
And thank you very much.
Add to that, because she's talking about the soloists. There is the, they were all wonderful, but the soprano was, I've never been in the presence of someone singing with such clarity, such a beautiful voice. It was really awesome. Anyway, I do want to also mention, just because we're on this, I also got to go to Buttonwood twice to see some jazz. So I got Noah Bearman with Chris Allen doing all due gallant and fantastic. And this is the first time I even, anyway, and the second group was Eric Mandel, another wonderful, and his band. So, you know, it was really nice to take some time and actually go to places that we support and to see something fantastic, really, you know, really, I think, national and world-class music being done here.
My observation was that the singers, the corral, were in the very, very back. Then, not in front of the orchestra, but it was on the stage.
Yeah, there are some.
And therefore, it was front and center, and the soloists were. And.
Which would a real performance.
My comment just is, when I looked at the program, they didn't even list the names of anybody in the corral.
Oh, and the corral did not list, right, just the soloists.
And so on, so.
You're right, you're right, they did not.
I felt that it was.
Neither did the program, right, right, none of it was.
Okay.
They didn't get the, you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I just want to make note that Ed McCune has joined and Julia Faraci have joined. Welcome.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have the motion to approve the minutes? I believe there are some corrections made. So can we have a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections?
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes with its corrections.
Second?
Second.
Do we order labor corrections, though?
We, grammatical spelling, things like that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. We already did the, a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
We did.
Second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor? Okay. Remarks from the chair, not a whole lot, but I do want to, the only thing I want to bring up, and it's part of the 50th discussion, but to move it along, and, because we might have a little bit of discussion from this, we're talking about our celebration, isn't it? There's two things on the, two ideas. So Lee has his idea, Keisha has it there. So what I want to do is throw it out to you guys. We have to make a decision tonight, what we're going to do, because time is moving forward. So I want to take this to a brief discussion and then maybe a vote. So, you know, I'm going to say Lee and Keisha's idea, because they're both, they're both good ideas, but instead of the three of us making a decision, it's a team effort. So, one idea is to have our event in October on the lawn, with a tent and everything, for the celebration of the 50th, okay? Like we had discussed in the last meeting.
And as it is displayed here in the minutes.
Right, right, yes. The other idea was to do the community celebration on the Last Summer Sounds Concert, still, because we'd already have the showmobile here and everything, you have the tent and the cake, and do all the things we would play, same plan I'm doing in October with the community, but do it on the Last Summer Sounds Concert. And then maybe in October, do a kind of cocktail reception for commissioners, past commissioners, city officials.
Invite.
That kind of thing was a little bit more intimate, just to thank people over the years that have been serving for over the 50 years at that, and have a little more intimate, relaxed kind of social event. So those are the two ideas.
Would that be, it sounds like that's for alumni commissioners?
Yes, we would invite all the, with past commissioners.
Things like that, it'd just be.
Right, and we could even invite, maybe not the whole camp, but maybe like Amory from the Buttonwood Tree, you know, the key person.
Granties, grantees, awardees.
Yes.
I thought that was part of it, anyway, I mean, just.
You use the word "community." Which of those events are you using "community"?
The public, the public would be involved. The public would be here for the event, and we would celebrate with the public.
When is the Last Summer Sounds Concert scheduled for?
25th of August, August 26th.
So eight, so eight, 25.
The first one would be community, where everybody could turn out?
Anybody can come, yes.
But the second one would be?
Would be kind of an invitation.
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 And where would we have that?
Well, that would be, we could either do it at the Els, or we could do it at the Mansion. We, like I said, we'd have to decide, because we'd have to.
You have to reserve it.
See what their availability is.
Yeah.
Basically, after, you know, once reading this, hearing every, hearing what everyone wants, as I'm scheduling the Summer Sounds Concert, it seemed kind of, the stars seemed to align by thinking, well, if there's a Summer Sounds Concert on a Thursday, the 25th, why don't we use that as an end of?
We'll be performing, I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, I have a band lined up.
Okay.
I have not solicited, you know, talked to this band yet, but it would be a band in particular for this event. And that does, you know, a variety of, you know, very different styles, styles of music, very fun and outgoing, thinking that if I bring that band in for that date, let's make a party of it, since all of the efforts that you were trying to do on the lawn with getting a tent and calling it a 50th, I'm already setting it up. So I'm just suggesting, maybe I just invite you all to do your activities at the Last Summer Sounds Concert.
So that would not be the community one?
That, that is, that is the community one, that is.
But see, we already invite the community to Summer Sounds.
That's the public, that's the public community, though.
Yeah, we already invite, the communities are, it's already for the community, but we're just putting.
I was thinking of something.
Put another extra level of effort into making it more of a celebration, end of year kind of thing.
You asked us to come up with ideas. And I came up with a couple of ideas that I think would fit in so much when people come out on the lawn, and I did not plan that they're just going to sit there and listen to the last concert.
Right, right.
I didn't, that was not my, my idea. So I would, I'd like to discuss ideas a little bit more until.
Well, the problem is, we can't keep discussing, because we are now into June, so we need to make a decision.
But I think.
We have to come up with something.
I think I know where you're going.
Well, I know, but I brought some ideas, how, when will I be able to present it?
Well, we were supposed to be presenting these right along, so, what's your idea, Barbara? What's your idea? Because I don't want to belabor this too long. What's your idea?
I have ideas. One of them I'm wearing, I think we should have T-shirts or something that represents.
Okay, but this is a celebration now, so what?
This is, this is my Beethoven, Bach, so forth shirt. Now, first, I have five ideas. And if you would just give me your respectful.
Just be agreed with each one of them, and so we can go from there.
Okay.
We are in June, so we don't have a lot of time left.
Well, I know we don't have a lot of time. I thought that we would be on the lawn, and that at that time, there would be also the exhibition in here, just like Pride has exhibition, in the front part, maybe the chambers, but the first part. And that there were, we could have exhibitions of ones that have received grants and honories and things, and, but it would be mounted. Now, I think that it could be left longer than just that one day.
You're talking about visions, you.
Along with it, have some sort of an exhibition. If we were able to do it for Pride, we should be able to do it. Okay, that's, that's an idea of the exhibition. I'm sure different organizations that have gotten the grants and so forth would love to include little exhibitions of their thing in it, too. Okay. Now, this, I like this idea do very much. A questionnaire, have questionnaire available for one time, but for more than that. The questionnaire would say, are you an artist? Are you a musician? Are you an actor, actress? Are you a dancer? Are you a poet? Okay. What I'm saying, this would, we would reach out at something that's for the community, where there are a lot of people there. I don't mean they're just sitting, watching a concert, I mean they're going around and so forth. And people would have questionnaires that they would fill out. And we would discover so many people in our community.
Well, we could do, we could do that at any event we do.
Yeah, we could do that at any event, that doesn't have to be a special event, we're talking about a special event.
Whatever we end up with, we could, we could include that.
I'm talking, I'm addressing the special event where people would come on the lawn, because that's another. I am offering a sing-along also that day, that's another idea. But I'm going back to this, this "are you" kind of thing, and it's groups. And we would get so much information on people, because they'd be filled out, and when it came, we could have one month, two months, three months there, and we could publicize the names of people that are poets, that are people that are in our community, in the paper and others, or, and take some of them and honor. But we could bring out our artists in the community.
Yeah, an inventory.
Now, you say, one of the questions would be, are you a professional or amateur?
Okay, so we know, okay, we know the question, they have sing-alongs.
Now, let's, let's go to, I'd like to do a sing-along with the Middletuners and some other singers, who even, that I mentioned, to join in with the Middletuners, because, you know, they've gotten older during the pandemic, and hitch on some. And we would do the songs of Middletown composers. Now, you know, we have Middletown composers, three, very famous ones, De Couben and Rubel.
We can go through the details, what's your, what's your next idea?
The three, the three, and the guy back, Grandfather's Clock, and all that guy. But I think this, we could record, like, nearly Bruce has a song, they would be written out on sheets of paper.
It'd have to be.
And people would be, come up, and they know this is going to be a sing-along of it, and they would recognize, oh, hey, zip, diddy-doo-dah, zip, diddy-dah.
All right, Barbara, come on, we've got to move, because we've got to move on, we've got other things on the agenda, so what's the next one?
The, working with the schools, and I don't just mean that the public schools of Middletown, I mean the private schools, too. And we mentioned it when we had our music meeting, that they talked about making up songs. That would be a, different people could, then we would pick out the winners. But it isn't just making up, it could be something, we could think of something else, but everybody's into making up a song. And we could get the winners, so, okay, that would be that one. And I don't want to hold you up with doing any, oh, having, during this time, we can ask, the, he's very active, the guy, Anasta, Bob Bastard, over at the Historical Society.
Jesse Naster.
And see if we can't get an exhibit hitched in with the Historical Society about the history of something to do with the history of the finer arts of the arts in Middletown.
You're revisiting that project that you had last year.
Now, I was on to the music, I wanted to have one for musicians, but I'm saying it could be done in a way where it's all the arts that he wanted to do it.
I get it, yeah.
All right, so, so, so a lot of these things you're talking about are actually events that we can, we can do. What I'm talking about is a general celebration.
Well, I'm talking about, the sing-along is at the general celebration. And the questionnaires would be all over the place at the general celebration.
I can make, Barbara, I can make those, I can make a couple of those things happen very easily.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the first two.
Also, no, I won't say anymore now.
Right, so what, what we need is, we need to figure out what we want to do for the general celebration. Do we do it, the public, and then a special one? Or do we do it all at once in October, the public? Those are the two things out there. Once we decide that, then we can decide the.
What's happening.
Activities we want to do in.
The Summer Sounds Concert, Barbara, it's not, people, basically, people don't really just sit and listen to the music, people get up, walk around, there's, there's booths for recycling, there's other things going on. It, so some of your ideas can easily be incorporated.
Yeah, exactly.
I have a question.
Yes.
Madam Chair. Last time you said you were going to look into the cost of the police and fire for an outdoor event. Now, we, I presume that we have a cost of that for these Summer Sounds.
Yes.
We're going to have a cost of that if we do it on the front lawn, anyway. Now, is that going to make this outdoor concert so expensive that it would be almost cost-effective to do the outdoor Summer Sounds 50th Celebration combo with the private, more intimate setting indoors in October? Did anybody analyze the cost benefit to the having it one way or the other?
Well, well, one thing is, with the, all right, I did speak to the chief of police, he just said, all he said was, when you're ready, contact me.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Now, here's the thing, anything we do on the lawn, we'll have to have security.
Right.
No matter what, what we do.
That's right.
Summer Sounds, we're always going to have the security here. If we do something inside, like, we don't need that, we don't need that, because.
It's indoors.
It's indoors and it's an event, so we won't incur those costs.
Right.
So if we do in October, we will have to incur those costs.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is there a cost-benefit analysis that you can say it would be more cost-effective to have the outdoor celebration at the same time as the Last Summer Sounds Concert on the lawn, because you're already incurring those expenses?
We don't have a two, the.
You don't have a budget.
To the minute. But what you have to look at, this is, this is, that's even past what we have to look at, I believe. What we have to look at is, what we are, the question we're asking is, are we going to take the final celebration, which is supposed to be for the community? As our birthday party, not sharing it with Summer Sounds, not sharing it with another event, not being elitist in the event, inviting everybody to come and have one party there and do it? We chose vendor trucks, so we don't have to worry about food, if 100 people show up or 1,000, we're not stuck with that bill or that worry. So we're looking at money there.
Just take the Summer Sounds Concert title off of it, and what I'm, I feel like everyone, Dominique, you've nailed it, I'm just offering that time, that captured snapshot of time for a showmobile that's already being organized to be there, for police that is already notified on the date that there will be activity there. The venue and the show, every, the skeleton is there, all you have to do is just.
Then why don't we skip this? Because I'm also worried about, I can have somebody come and put a coat on in October, but they can't air-condition themselves in August. So I'm looking more at that, what if we cancel the Summer Sounds and move that Summer Sounds budget to October?
And I, just.
I'm going to keep this, I'm going to keep the concert.
Just to be, just to be the devil's advocate a little bit, in October, kids are back in school, football practices are going on, kids are back in basketball practices, so a lot of the afternoons or evenings are going to be taken up with games, and so I don't know how many people's in the community, so I just don't want to, I kind of throw it, I'm just going to explain the devil's, devil's advocate a little bit.
It's a devil's sword, actually, because you're at the end of August, some people are away, do you know what I'm saying?
Everybody, it's like summer's over, and they're going to do their own thing.
But I personally think it's better to do the two events, that's my sense of all this, where we kind of separate it, so that we don't have, you know, if it's a, for some reason, that a lot of people turn out for the last event, you know, or they're not here, maybe the mayor's away on vacations, you know what I'm saying? Who knows?
Well, that can always be, but what I'm looking, what I'm looking at is exactly that, the biggest bang for your buck. And if you start with two little celebrations instead of one big one, you're going to end up with, and I don't know how to break this down anymore than, than kind of like uptown people, downtown people.
It's not elite, it's, and this is where Lee and I had a discussion, it's not elitist. I think doing something for the past commissioners, I mean, this is, that's why we're throwing it out to you guys, so this is our opinion. Throwing, doing something to honor the service of past commissioners. And people who have supported the arts and have been part of it, and a, so I'm just saying, so I just want to make sure everybody kind of understands the two things, is that they're both great ideas, I'm not saying they're not. What we have to decide on tonight is which one are we going to do? Once we decide that, then we can decide the sing-alongs and all the activities we're going to have at this event.
So you're saying one, you just want one?
Yeah, we have the food.
No, it's up to, it's up to you guys to, the majority is going to rule this case. So, these ideas have one in October, on the lawn with the showmobile. Keisha's saying, taking that last.
Or earlier, it doesn't have to be October, but.
Taking that last, last Thursday in August, and, and say, this is going to be our community-wide.
50th anniversary celebration.
50th anniversary celebration, we make sure we mark it.
We'll do all the activities, and we'll have, you know.
But that should have been, or should be.
Or we can make that it, not do another, and not do anything else in October.
Because I was thinking, that wasn't just showmobile and entertainment, that we were bringing all the ex, the old commissioners into that, that we were bringing all the artists into that. And in this day and age, COVID's still not going to be gone, people want an outdoor thing, any excuse to get, I'm, the chief wanted to do it, I can't go, I want to do things outside, I do things inside if I want to, but if I don't want to do it, that's a great excuse.
Well, it sounds like if you're going to do, if you do the October thing, a committee should be, a subcommittee ought to describe me some form, and you need to start planning tonight on what all of these components and things are. That, because there's a lot, there's a lot of planning involved.
And for the others, well.
And the potential, and the, you know, what, what that is to look, to look like. The Summer Sounds Concert on the 25th is going to, is, I'm going to make it great, it's going to be as great as, as they normally are.
And also remember, October's a busy wedding month.
Like I said, I was just offering, it was an opportunity, it's an opportunity to use it, the MCA to use it as a platform, it's an, it's an open canvas for you, for you to use if you, if you chose, choose to do so. If not, it is no, no issue for me, it was just more of a.
Okay, so, okay, so, all right, so.
Can I just say, originally, we were thinking about doing, doing something private, but the complications with the private, you're, you're stuck with guessing how many people are going to be there, you're stuck guessing.
No, we're not guessing, because we'd be sending out invitations.
But that doesn't mean they're going to come.
No, we're sending out invitations, invitations with RSVP, so we know, because we have to plan for food and all that stuff, so we'd be sending out invitations.
But there's a lot more involved in that.
Not as much as you think.
I do these for a living, and I'm.
And I've done a lot of them, too, and it's not as bad as you think. So, the thing is, because it's easy to get a caterer, they're doing all the work, we're just going to do the invitations. So, the bottom line, okay, so here we go. So, showing hands, how many want to do, all right, first, okay, so two things. First, let's, do we do, how many want to do one in August? Okay, no hands.
She said, do you want to do the 50th celebration in August, on the last night of the Summer Sounds?
I am, I, I really hesitate to make this be a performance of the last time, and, you know, it takes away.
Yes or, Barbara, what's your vote? Yes or no? What do you think?
We're going to do activities, but we need to know, do we want to do our celebration in August? It doesn't have to be, do we do our celebration in August, or do we do our celebration in October?
When we do it in August, do we have to have a performance, and advertise it as a performance night?
That would be something we'd have to decide later, once we decide on what we're doing first. First things first, do we want one in, how many want one in August?
I don't, I'm not clear on this, so. The August one is, is part of the concert series, right?
Well, it doesn't have, she's saying it doesn't have to be, we don't have to, it doesn't have to be part of Summer Sounds, it could just be.
So it's a separate one then.
It would be our, our last, end of the season.
The last date for Summer Sounds would be the 50th Anniversary Celebration.
Right.
Right.
So that it would be held outdoors, we already have the police and fire, the showmobile, from, from logistic point of view. It's already scheduled, this is much simpler, in fact, than, you know, creating a whole new event outdoors, same place, same location, and everything else.
Are you describing coming and sitting down and listening to it, and then getting up and going home?
No, 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 we haven't decided.
We haven't decided all of that yet.
We're just deciding, no, we're just deciding when and where.
We're also looking.
That's all we're deciding. If we're going to have one or two. If we have two, it would be for everybody outdoors at the end of August, with lots of activities, and it wouldn't just be Summer Sounds, it would be the 50th. With lots of activities, and it wouldn't just be Summer Sounds, it would be the fiftieth anniversary community celebration on the lawn.
Right.
And then, later on, in October? Doesn't matter what the weather is, I know there was a lot of discussion about the weather last time in October? We're gonna be outside with a coat, and it's gonna rain, and a hurricane, and this and that. So, we could have a smaller one for all those people who have contributed to the arts? Who have been arts grantees, who have been commissioners, who have been, uh, arts advocates? And all, all of those people that you want to, to honor, celebrate and award.
But I see them honored at the, the big one? With the entire public there, that's, we wanna, we wanna bring the arts together, everyone in the community.
Well, there's, there's no, no doubt that you can invite them, invite them.
So.
To, to October, I mean, to invite them to.
To not the public.
The details, the details.
Invite them to the public, and then, you know, honor them privately.
I know, but that's not gonna be where we can.
Personally, it sounds like, it, it sounds, no one has really said anything, but it sounds like. You've explained that perfectly, thank you for articulating that. But the, the, the other side of it is just have one party in October. That's it.
Right.
Okay.
If it's October, it could be November, it could be December, it could be New Year's Eve.
Well, not, not on the front lawn.
They wanna be.
No, it's, come October, it's, just forget about it being outside, it's inside somewhere? For, for two hundred, for two hundred assigned people, RSVP.
So, you're, we're saying that if we decide on August, we will still have a follow-up later on with the.
August is gonna be Summer Sounds, period.
Yes, exactly, but we're gonna honor the people who are also been part of the MCA in different capacities? In the, in an October event later on.
In a separate event in October.
So, if we do the August one, we do both, really.
Okay, so, do we want one, let's start here, one event or two events? Let's start with just that, one event or two events?
I say two.
I say two, too, cuz you can't, you can't work.
Because one, somebody who can't come in August, maybe they can come in October.
But wait, 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 that's, what are the two events?
The Summer Sounds.
The big.
One on the lawn.
See, it's one on the lawn and then it's no one. It's not, Summer Sounds is happening.
Yes, no matter what. We're, we're gonna make that.
So, that's not one of the events we're talking about.
We're not gonna, wait a minute, we're not calling, we're not gonna call that one in the end of August, Summer Sounds? It is going to be.
Be a different name.
The fiftieth anniversary celebration.
For the town.
For the city.
Right.
So, basically, we're doing what we're gonna do there in Au, in October, in August.
In August.
Right.
The same amount of time?
Because most, cuz mostly people will be back at that time, cuz school starts, like, the next week, so people will be back?
School starts now, we have.
I think you're gonna have a mediocre showing and a, a decent mediocre showing.
No, school start, most people are gonna be back on vacation, cuz school starts here in August.
Not, not because, not because of school or anything, people will, if they wanna come, they're gonna come? But, I think it really needs to be, and I know it can dedicate it, it doesn't have to be called, called Summer Sounds? But, it's just, I'm not even liking the Friday night, and I know it's gonna cost more to do it on Saturday.
It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be, well, that's why this August, because it's a Thursday, it's not a Friday.
The kids are still getting, getting ready and doing things and wanting to play, and it's their last few days and everything else, and. And it's coming downtown and a hot, sticky day, we've had no success in anything in the summer down here.
Well, I don't know, last year, we had a really good turnout.
For Summer Sounds?
Yeah.
So, let's.
We had a good turnout.
Answer me this question, what would be, what would make?
People actually know what important stuff is going on.
Exactly, if we have, no matter what we do, we have to market it.
Right.
And the thing is, I'm, I'm nervous in October, because we planned this, and then it's pouring rain out there, no one's coming. And not saying when.
It could rain in August.
Not saying it wouldn't, but it's less likely.
Are you putting the tent up?
Yeah, we would still get the tent, we would still get the tent and everything, we'd have to check with Tom and make sure? But I said, we still put a tent, we would do all the things we want to do in October.
I have a trip to the Azores I wanna book in October that I'm not, I'd love to see it in August, but I'm telling you, you're shooting yourself in the foot.
I, 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 I don't, I don't agree with that, but anyway, so, anyway, we just, okay, so showing hands, everybody said two events, okay? So, we got, we got two, so, let's work on the twenty fifth of August? And we'll do and work on what we have, I would still like to see a, a band play, we can still do some of these other things? We can still do a sing-along, we can still do, break it up and make it, make it, um, we get, we can work on the details, okay?
We'll have a sing-along, we'll have recognition of, of, of artists, we'll have recognition of grantees.
And this is on a Thursday night?
It's on a Thursday night.
Starting at what time?
We can start whenever we want to.
When do they usually start?
People work.
Six to eight.
So.
Well, actually, you know, I'll be honest with you, when the chamber does their stuff, it's five, it starts at five o'clock? Because a lot of people don't wanna go home if they're already downtown, they're not going home, coming back.
Well, how about?
Play a certain amount of time, they don't have to play the whole time.
Well, you're gonna have more than just, so, so what about five thirty to eight thirty?
I think it's gotta be sooner.
That, that'll give you three hours to add in all these extra things you're doing.
Right, right, okay, so we can work out the details, you know, August.
So, recognition.
Then we can, let's start working on that, and then we can, we have to work on a location for the reception? In October.
Yes, because if you recall, when you talked about this on the lawn event in October? You also mentioned a VIP reception prior. So, what you're doing is you're taking that VIP reception and putting it off for another night, basically.
See, and I consider the community the VIPs.
So, alright, so we, we, we cut.
The other one's not invited.
We, we've, we've, we've decided, alright, so.
I know what you're saying.
We're gonna do the community thing in August, and we'll work out a reception in October.
I don't think there's enough time, Lee, to really do justice to both groups, though.
I don't either, I think it should be at the same time?
I said, you can't, I mean, I don't think it would do injustice, I mean, to do both, you know, like, the, the pride people and all our, our, and people that have been.
I, we've got more than, um, usually when you send out invitations, it's six weeks in advance.
Yeah, I think.
We've, we've got plenty of time to send out those invitations.
You know, all the music, yeah.
Well, even if you sent invitations to.
We, we, we.
Everyone in the North End, everyone in the North End is not gonna come up to the mansion? But, everybody from the mansion will come down to the center here with everyone in the North End.
Well, that's why we're gonna do this, that's why we're gonna do this community, we're not inviting everybody on the North End. We're gonna, this is, the reception we're talking about.
Whenever anybody's invited to the mansion, I've, people go, they love the mansion, I'm just being on board, I'm joking.
Yeah, but there's a comfort level, people don't really like fussing things anymore, where they have to.
That's not, that's not, we just had a, um, business after work day and the place was loaded, so. Um, cuz this is gonna be invitation only.
And it could be in a month, or just, you know, like an off night?
Exactly, 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 right.
The mansion is very busy.
Right.
If we.
Alright, so, this is, this is where we stand with this. We will work on the details, we'll work on the details. We will have to check with the mansion, see what's available, then we go from there. Alright, but we have, I think we have plenty of time, cuz some of these activities are small enough? Your, um, the exhibition you're talking about.
Recognition of artists, the exhibition.
Talking to Jesse to see if we can do a display, yes, Charlotte?
The other thought is the historical society.
Well, that's what I said, talk to Jesse.
Talk to Jesse, because it's actually, the yard in the back is so beautiful? And, um, it might be quite, and, and sort of a little bit intimate, so.
That's actually not a bad idea.
That might be a better place, cuz it is downtown.
That's, that's actually a really good idea.
That is a nice idea.
Barbara, you know, the, and I didn't go to the St. Sebastian exhibit, but I don't know how long that's gonna be up for? The, uh, which it talks about, or Italian, the integration and, you know, their importance in the music? Uh, uh, and their influences in, you know, nationally.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that would be very elegant.
That's a really good idea, Charlotte.
We could have a small tent there, we can have a tent set up there.
No, you could have a big tent, that's a big yard behind that.
Yeah, we can have a tent set up there, that's a very good idea.
And we even spread into the park, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
It could be.
Yes.
That's actually a perfect idea.
It's a lovely idea, you could have the showmobile in the park? And you could use both sides, you know, combine, you know.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah. Okay, and then, you know.
And that way, the people that you're concerned about, Leah, you know, they would be here.
Everybody would be, everybody would be invited, I think.
I think that sounds great too, then look at the cost of that and that.
Well, this is already.
That does matter.
This is, this is already scheduled.
This is already done, because it's already done.
And this is already paid for, because it's already in the budget, cuz they're already doing it? You know, the police, the fight, the big costs, the showmobile, the police and fire and the security.
But, that was inviting the entire community, this is a limited amount of people, and how many can go there? Two, three maybe, three hundred?
I don't know.
I don't know.
We'll find out, but we're not talking about inviting everybody and their brother, we're talking about, we have to look at what the list would be? And not everybody that we invite is gonna be able to come, anyway, what do they say, twenty, twenty percent?
But I, I like the, I like the idea of having it at, at the historical side, because it is downtown.
That's, that's true, and it is downtown.
It is a lovely spot, it is downtown.
That was, that's an excellent, excellent idea, okay, alright.
There's no issue with taxpayer money on private party?
It's not a private party, this is a city commission, it's not a private party.
But it's not open to the public, it's by invitation only, so that's a private party.
No, it's not a private party, it's a city commission inviting past commissioners, city commissioners.
And other people, you know, would like, for some reason, voice and interest in coming, for, you know? It might very low be that they can't do that, you know?
Okay.
You have to slight anybody.
I never got the impression that anyone was excluded.
No, right, that's what I, I wouldn't want them to feel that way.
It's invitation only, the people that didn't get invitations are excluded.
Well, aren't you honoring the, the known art sector of organization, you're inviting organizations, past commissioners?
Or lease grantees.
I, I'm not saying it, I would just check it. Just clear it.
Alright, so, we're, we're kinda clear on what we're gonna do, so let's move on. Alright, we'll look into all of that and move on, okay, staff report?
Keisha, do you got anything? I do, I do, first off? Uh, the budget hearing went very well, and I would like to publicly acknowledge and thank the council of City of Middletown? For granting the city arts office with an administrative assistant?
Really?
There's like twenty thousand dollars in the line?
Thank God, Keisha.
For, for, to elevate the arts office, and that, that right there is. Just a, a, a great move toward the arts in our city, so, thank you, um, council, mayor, and our citizens. Um, our resolution for Joe Fonda has been submitted to the council for their next upcoming meeting? For the one thousand dollars to be reflected as a decline in, in, in the original reservation? Um, Marcela Trowbridge has sent a written request for an extension, I will forward that email to everyone? Um, due to unforeseen circumstances, the Middle Eastern immigrants whom we were basing our stories on have communicated fear for their families? Sorry, I may not have said that, but we have been dealing with COVID, part two is that we've also been dealing with COVID in our company and in the process? Um, so, um, they are looking to, um, share Middle Eastern and Afghan culture in Middletown in September? We will, of course, still follow guidelines regarding the MCA with project support and with a grant report within the month? Following the completion of, of that. So, um, like I said, I, I shall forward, forward that.
In October?
Uh, September.
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 Okay, you all set?
No, um, last thing is, um, forgot that? Uh, we are all set for Pride, I have booth set up, um, we will be. Now, our booth, once we finish, uh, whoever's, uh, need to collect a list of those who are marching in the Pride Parade? Um, nine thirty to eleven thirty is the vendor setup on the, on the South Green, you don't have this written down in the agenda? Um, two to four PM is the march? Which starts in the North End, and four to six thirty is the Pride rally on the South Green? Our booth will contain, uh, a display of, of arts organizations pamphlets at the table? A bountiful display, that is? I'm doing my work on trying to collect as many business cards and brochures from individuals and artists as I can and organizations.
Can that be a good time to have the questionnaire?
There you go.
Oh, have a questionnaire.
That's a perfect, perfect place to have the questionnaire.
I have a button maker that we're gonna make the, what's, what's your art button, we have.
Um, just to tell you, I did some look, looking for you, I was supposed to print it out, I have it on my phone, I can shoot it over to you. Found a place called Twenty Four Hour Button? That will do one thousand buttons for two hundred and thirty dollars and have them by the thirty first? So, judge.
Yeah.
Banging out a thousand, and using the artwork that you gave me.
The other craft is, uh, postcards, we have blank postcards, each child or visitor will get, um, four crayons in a box that they can take with them? They'll draw on the postcards, I'll take their address, I'll capture that address to add to our mailing list from, from the parent or guardian? And start building our mailing list that way, I'll take the pieces of art that they've, the children have written, and I'll send it back to them in the mail? So that they actually receive a piece of their own artwork in the mail. How many postcards do you think you're gonna need? I've got, I think, two hundred or so.
Alright, cuz I have a box of postcards too, so if you need some, bring them on. I've got them, cuz I think I ordered like seven hundred and fifty, seven million, postcards or something else, so I have.
That's great, okay. I thought that would be a nice activity for kids to, I don't know how many kids are receiving mail? And to, for them to actually receive their own personal piece of art in mail with a little note from me that says, great job? Or, thanks for sharing your art, I think that would be a great.
That's a great idea.
A connection with the children.
Um, you're, and you're setting that up, that, that's at our booth?
That's at our booth.
And there'll be a table and commissioners, do you need, do you need other volunteers, like, commissioners that wanna help?
There'll be, yeah. So, we just, so far, it's you and I, Lee, and.
Okay.
But how long is the hours for that, I mean, I'm sorry, cuz I know it's, it's changed to what it used to be.
Well, it's, it's an all-day affair, it's an all-day affair, so.
It's an all-day affair, so you need people, cuz we have to march and then, okay, we can volunteer.
So, I'll send another list out, and Kate didn't say that she'd be able to, um, whatever, but I don't need to.
I can come up after I close.
Yeah, we, like I said, this could be a casual meeting, we can organize this in a different venue, um.
Do you know our position in the parade?
I do not know yet, that information, they're gonna roll, do that roll call very soon. Um, I mentioned that, and everything, I will not go through all the events that are happening in the city, there's the Pride one? I'm doing my best to make sure that all of you are abreast to know what events are happening through our email channels and our Facebook? And, and, and forward as many things as I can to you, so. Um, there's a fireworks poster over there, um, lawn signs will be going out next week, that.
Can you just review, um, banners, banners to carry, are we able to? MCA have a banner that they carry in front of them?
Yeah, we have a, we have a brand new banner, right, what's your art? We just need some PVC, we'll deal, deal with that, there's some, a couple of, you know, Home Depot visits I need to make? Just to get those things, but, um, and we can further discuss that offline, yeah, it's just the small details, I have nothing else to.
Okay, stop it, I'll say, alright, any, um, committee reports that, can we kind of read?
I only, I only have one thing, and it's just from Jennifer, um, apparently, the sound booth, and you may have noticed already? Is, um, being set up in front of the, uh, the, the old Woolworths building?
The what group?
The Wool, the, so the sound booth.
The sound booth.
Yeah, this is the one that Olivia Cox, Cox, I was like Fox, Cox has had, um, initially sent a grant in for it? Which we have agreed to give her money, and that's great, and she has her own, um, you know, um, materials that she's putting on? But she would want, materials too, that are necessary, or would be great to have, are the ones like some poetry readings? Or some, and music ambassador, you, you know, um, informa, I guess, music too? And then, um, well, whatever, whatever kind of audio stuff that we could provide? Or, you know, and help in some way to keep that as a lively corner? Uh, to keep, as a loop, it's a loop, I think, that's gonna continue to, to, I, I can't say anymore, more else about it? But I guess it's gonna be set up, so they have a contract to deal with, yeah, but I'm sure that.
I hope it's, you know, from some of our, um.
So, so it's probably seeing how Olivia's will work first, and then probably proceed from there, yeah.
How's the, um, window for the, um? Is that coming along?
That's in our fiftieth report.
Alright, any other committee reports?
Yes, the, uh, speaker that we were going to have? The, a woman that's in charge of the music, Farah Stella? Uh, she had second thoughts and said it's so hectic. She had second thoughts and said, "It's so hectic now that May is hit." And it's, she just didn't wanna do it then. She wants to do it in the fall, so I think it's later in September is when she will.
Do the opera?
Get the overview. Now, of course, things change. I don't know where Mr. Gaylord will be at that time, too, because he was involved in a lot of the music, too, and that report has come out now. And, uh, decisions will be made, but a, as far as I know, she is the music head anyway. Period, no matter what's going on around.
Oh, you're talking about Farah, you're talking about Farah?
Farah. Far, Farah was gonna come and talk to the music subcommittee.
Okay, gotcha, Farah.
But things got so busy for her in May, in early May, that she couldn't.
Yeah, yes, it's terribly busy for her, right?
She couldn't, she couldn't come, so that was the report for the music subcommittee.
Okay, thank you.
In the meantime, I, yeah, I've taken the affective and support invited, uh, that are available to parents about the different things that are, that are taught to the kids. So I'm going to look up and see if there's anything in the arts that's in writing.
Just the music, though, the music.
Well, you must know what was in, for art, did they put the paragraph?
They don't really have a mus, they don't have an art department head. They're just, it's.
No, no, I'm talking about, they say there is a little pamphlet on each subject.
Oh, there is, there is. I don't know how long, I don't know when it's been, you know, updated, though. It may, may need to be updated. Who knows? It's been a very difficult three years of COVID, to be honest. It's not the same program.
Okay. Lee?
The fiftieth? Oh, I don't have anything for, um, it's, it's kind of rolled into what's all fiftieth or.
Okay, um, let's do that.
Okay. So, let me get my notes on that. Okay, um, first, good news is, on the window, we have gotten the purchase order and the check to purchase the TVs. We've got a thirty-nine inch TV, a twenty-four inch TV, a nineteen inch TV, a twenty-eight inch TV, and a thirty-two inch TV for two hundred and fifty dollars.
What?
That's how you roll.
Could you repeat that, please?
Their monitors.
Oh, you don't need it. We, we, we got the monitors, five monitors for two fifty.
You got five monitors for two fifty.
Monitors are cheap.
Um, the rest of the supply list I need is just hard drive for the video files. To, to, to just keep it, the USB drives, which are ranging like ten dollars each, so we're gonna need five. I mean, it's, we're talking under a hundred dollars for everything here. So that end of it is looking really good. Keisha, my question to you is, how do we get these? This would be a Staples item. Should I just?
Five reformatting ones in my office you can have.
And, and you know what? I'll have you talk to Ryan. Keisha, Keisha, Ryan and I met, too, after our last meeting, so Keisha's up on Ryan and, and, um, I would rather just.
Ryan is a technician.
The technician, yeah.
Is it, uh, you took like a, are you talking about a hard drive or just a USB drive or?
USB drives.
We need ten USB drives and one hard, and one hard drive to back everything up.
Can it be a, um, portable hard drive?
Yes.
Okay.
And he said storage, I need one of them to be sixteen to thirty-two gigabytes. I would just make sure that there's no quality of a used one. I, I don't know.
I got it, yeah. Portable, portable hard drive, we can get, what are you talking about, USB drives or?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to.
Cause you can get a portable terabyte, one terabyte hard drive, pretty useful these days.
And, um, the only other thing we may need is an extension cord and a power bar. We're not worried. So what I, what I, the only reason I wanna know is, I don't want to keep, and I have to talk to Charlotte about this, keep bothering Jim when we're hanging those in there by having them come down, open up, and then I have to run to Lowe's or run to Staples. I'd rather have everything I need there. So it's a one time in, one time out, get that, and then Charlotte, we turn it over to you guys to decorate what's in there after we hang the screens and have all that working. Um, so that's that. The other, what's the other? The other is, oh, we have a drag queen who is going to be riding in a truck, my truck, um, waving to the crowd as a float.
For the Pride Parade?
For the Pride Parade.
Is it one of the ones who exhibited?
No, it's not. It is, I'm really happy about this drag queen, because it's bringing things in that I really like. It's a Middletown resident. Their family owns a business here. Their family is fully supportive of her, they being a drag queen. They, um, just turned nineteen. So it's got a lot of the youth factor and everything else, and it's, it is the up-and-coming drag queen who has won multiple competitions already. She is allowed into bars with alcohol, because her mother accompanies her, their mother accompanies them, and has won these competitions against older and more experienced queens.
I think I know who this is.
I bet you do.
Thanks, Lee, for, or to make, you know.
That's wonderful.
Offering the space, and, and it sounds like it's gonna be great.
Yep, we, um, I, I think it really helps, so we'll probably, up to you, either with the banner and the marchers, or I don't know how big it is, maybe the, the, cause I, I'm hoping it goes like a mile an hour or something, not much faster than that. And we will just be driving, surrounded by our marchers, but it will add to our, to our march.
Oh, yeah. It, it'll make the connection between Pride and, uh.
Right.
The MCA.
And she is wearing, they are wearing a rainbow gown, so it will. I would like to, Pam and I discussed this, and I think, I'm not sure if I discussed it with you, I would like to offer a stipend for doing it, since they have to take the day off of work. The makeup, the dress, they will start getting ready at probably eight in the morning. So it's a, a full-time job.
Yeah, it's a process.
So I would like to, and it's nothing that was promised.
So this is a contribution that, that MCA will do, you mean?
Yeah, right.
What is our contribution?
Right, right, right.
Right. I would suggest two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars? I have no idea what this takes to do all that.
Well, I mean, you know, what would it, what would they make if they performed for several hours somewhere?
About that, depending on where and what, and what the function was.
Where and what and how. I mean, that's not, that's, is that in line with what they would earn if they were?
As a stipend for doing this.
Performing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted.
It would be two, two to two fifty would be the average.
Well, I think, I think that's reasonable, then.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything to vote on it coming out of our checking account, coming out of our, do you have a budget for this?
Well, you've made a fifteen hundred dollar budget for Pride activities already in the minutes.
Didn't, didn't, wasn't that earmarked for a specific?
That's earmarked for fiftieth acti, for fiftieth.
Okay.
So that's part of our fiftieth, all-inclusive celebration, yeah.
That's, I mean, wait, I can.
Okay.
Okay, that should be part of that. I mean, you're not gonna spend fifteen hundred dollars on the window.
No, no, no.
No, but the window's not Pride, that's.
I, I know, but I'm just looking at the budget in an overall, you know, like you're not.
As long as you know where it's coming from, I'm good with it, and you just tell me what I need, if you need information, social security numbers, or whatever. And I don't think they're really worried about being paid.
I think it would just be a nice gesture of support.
It's a very nice gesture, yes.
Because they are an artist, and this is what we're supposed to be doing, and they're a Middletown resident artist, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're honoring the, yes, we're supporting the arts.
Well.
This is what it means.
And I will, I will tell you that one of the reasons they are doing this is because, when, when I first talked to them, they were a little, like, I don't know if I want to be spotlighted as a, because people are very worried. Pride is used a lot now as commercially for people who don't really believe it. And I said, "No, you fit in perfectly what we, what we are doing, because we will be passing out buttons that say, 'What is your art?' And this is your art."
That's right.
And she said, "I'm all in favor of that," so.
Motion made by Thornton, "To buy screens and hard drives, spend no more than fifteen hundred for the equipment and whatever material they deem appropriate to set up the window to get it started." And I seconded the motion for material, equipment, and tech for the Adult Ed Window Project passed unanimously.
That was for the window.
That, that's for the window.
That's only for the window, not for anything.
It's not for anything else, but, but I'm just saying.
Oh, we gave money, well, that's another.
We gave money to the.
We, we, we did our sponsorship.
We did.
Did our sponsorship, but that's different than.
But then.
But we, we have funds for.
Yeah, we know that we'll have.
We have funds for, because this is actually being, being part of Pride, is part of our fiftieth, again, promoting our fiftieth anniversary, so, yeah.
Okay, well, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
The participants, we have expenses and.
Right, exactly, it's an expense, yeah.
Well, I'm good anyway, you wanna do it, so just.
Is that it, Lee? You done?
Um, yes.
Okay, alright. Um, only new business that I know right now is, um, we have to do the, um, nominating committee needs to convene and come up with a slate for next month. So whoever's on that nominating committee, um, that needs to be done, our bylaws.
Who's on the nominating committee?
I don't know. No, Lee had her office, because he was by the. Julia? I think Julia.
I am.
Julia?
I, I don't know who else is.
Dominique is.
I am.
Dominique, yeah.
And who else?
That's it.
Just the two of us? Me and Julia?
Who?
So we have to come up with a slate of what, officers?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay.
Are you ready, Julia?
Okay.
I'll call you.
Alright, okay. Other than that, um, we did our announcements, so.
New business?
Nothing else?
Hang on, hang on, I'm sorry. Um, you can't be on the nominating committee, because you're an officer.
Oh, okay.
So.
That's fine, not me.
Julia, it's all with you.
Does anyone wanna help, Julia? Can we put a call out?
Maybe we can ask Kate, huh? Maybe we can ask Kate.
Kate, can you ask Kate?
I'll contact Kate.
Okay.
Right.
You and Kate.
Okay, and are we, are we?
Oh, Joyce raised her hand.
Are we, are we down any commissioners?
Yes, we're down two.
Yeah, we will, we are down, and we're gonna be down the end of June, because with term limits in effect, we'll be losing two. So we are down about four commissioners.
Okay.
Now that the charter's in place, we have two that terms end to the end of June.
Don't, don't they serve, don't they serve until they're replaced?
No, not the way this is working.
So, did you say, did you say, Pam, that we're down?
We're already down, we need, um, I think, two Republicans, and then we're gonna be down two more, so we're actually gonna be down four by the end of June.
Four Republicans.
No, not four Republicans, but four commissioners. Two of them have to be Republicans.
Okay.
Okay?
Alrighty.
Dominique, you're correct in one thing. If you're serving, you can serve till the end of, that, that you've been voted in, or if you're on a project that you're heading up, then you can finish out the month or two that's.
Well, not according to the charter, though. Once the terms are done, they're done.
So you're talking about this, you're talking about this, too?
The charter trumps that, yeah.
Joyce, Joyce.
Joyce has her hand up. Yes.
Joyce has her hand up.
Um, hi, my voice is coming in? I don't know.
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. Um, well, I think maybe I would not be a very good member of the nominating committee if, in fact, I, my term is coming to an end. This is sort of a surprise to me. I hadn't been contacted about that, but, uh, anyway, uh, maybe it would be better to have people who will be going, going forward with the commission. So, um, I think I withdraw. And I'm sorry, Julia, would have loved working with you.
Yeah, I don't know how the mayor's gonna do it, but the, but the, um, that's when we have to meet with him, but according to the charter, the new charter. The terms end in June. You can still participate in all the activities and things like that, but the terms are.
But can I say that I think the mayor should send out a notice to people?
Well, you know that, and we, he's been bu, busy with budget, so we have not bothered him with that, now that the budget is passed.
It's not just our group, though, I'm saying, you know.
I, we know that, so now that the budget has passed, we can talk to him about.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of.
This is not the only committee.
Yeah, this is not the only committee that this, this charter chain is affected.
I'm aware, I'm aware, I understand, the general.
But he was in the middle of the budget and we weren't gonna bother him with that.
You know, there's, there's other commissions, like the Commission on Disabilities.
Yeah.
There are people on there that have been there for over twenty years.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We'll spur up those details, and I will make sure to.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, okay, so, yeah, because we did get, we got emails saying the charter was in effect, blah, 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 and that was months ago, but with the chart, with them going through the budget, we weren't gonna bother him through the budget process. Alrighty, so.
Yeah.
All set? We're done?
A motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, meeting adjourned at eight oh seven.